Good evening. We'd like to call to order the meeting of the Bryant City Board of Education, our regular meeting for Monday, December 13th, 2021. So if you would join me first in the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call, Kevin?
Scott?
Here.
Ben?
Here.
Deb?
Here.
Dustin?
Here.
Mike?
Here.
Thank you.
I hope that you all had a chance to look over the minutes from the November meeting. Would ask if there's any additions or corrections, changes. So hearing none, I would accept a motion to approve those minutes from November.
So moved.
Thank you, Mike.
Second.
Thank you, Ben.
Scott?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Public participation, I'm not aware of any. I did want to make just a quick announcement to everybody that there have been some changes made in our public participation that we approved last month. Just wanted to give everybody out there a heads up that we have changed our participation to allow people to speak for a minimum of three minutes, down from our normal five minutes previously. And again, attendees must register with the treasurer with their intention to participate in the public participation portion of the meeting. And this is the part that's critical because it's changed no later than three hours prior to the start of the meeting. So with our meetings generally being at seven o'clock, you would have to be registered with the treasurer by four o'clock in the afternoon. You would need to call the central office and ask for the treasurer or let them know that you want to participate in the board meeting that evening. That number is 636-6973 at the central office for anybody who needs to put that down on their agenda. So we'll go on to communications, Mark. Four County report from Syndra.
Yeah, so I'll jump in here. Syndra Keeler provided us an update with happening at Four County Career Center. She said, "Our Four County students are keeping busy right up until the upcoming holiday break. Many have participated in a food drive for local food banks in recent weeks. December 2nd, they hosted a career exploration day for all sophomores. They had over 1,500 sophomores from 22 member schools in participation. Many Four County students from Bryant helped the day, including Lexi Allspaw, Elijah Wilson, Micah McCashen, and Erica Wischnowitz. The Future Health Professionals Chapter members include over 90 health careers and exercise science and sports medicine students. Megan Morris from Bryant is one of their officers. Bryant's Casey Allspaw is on the student council and participated in the Service Learning Project that was recently hosted by Four County Career Center. And Four County has invited many school counselors to a tour with in-lab demonstrations. Bryant counselors were guided by McKenna Carter from Bryant. And the November Student of the Month was selected, and from Bryant, it was Faith Luftborough. And she is in the Early Childhood Education Program. She wishes us all a healthy and safe holiday season." So thank you to Syndra.
Great, thank you, Syndra. Appreciate her doing that. All right, so we will move to our student spotlight for the evening.
Yeah, so we have a couple guests with us today. We have Cooper and McKenna Myers. Cooper's in third grade and McKenna is in fifth grade. And they have come with Mrs. Rachel Mann, one of our elementary guidance counselors. And we are in the midst of preparing for the holidays. So they helped in our partnership with Mix 98.1. We partner with them each year to raise money for the Christmas for Kids campaign. And these two had a very large part in that campaign. We have set and broken a new record each year for the last, what, handful of years maybe? And maybe they'll explain that. So they're going to tell us all about their campaign efforts and what Christmas for Kids means to them and how all of those proceeds help many families locally in need. So I'll turn it over to them at this time. You guys can go right down to the podium. Thank you, Cooper. Got it?
Bryant City Schools once again participated in the Christmas for Kids program. This is a joint fundraising effort sponsored by the radio station Mix 98.1 and the Herman Hesse Shore detachment number 758 of the Marine Corps League. Every year, this campaign provides nearly 5,000 children from Defiance, Williams, Henry, Fulton, and Fulton Counties with Christmas presents. This will be Bryant City Schools' 10th year participating, and all of the monies donated are kept in Williams County. Each year, Christmas for Kids provides a wonderful opportunity for students to learn the positive feelings that come from helping others and a great way to kick off the holiday season. Every child deserves a Christmas, and with the generous help of our students and families, we accomplish this very special goal. Christmas for Kids at Bryant Elementary was November 15th to 18th, and the high school was November 29th through December 3rd. A total of $7,648.48 was collected between the two buildings. Mix 98.1 held a live drive November 29th from 7:00 to 9:00 a.m. Bryant Schools has participated in Christmas for Kids for the past 10 years, raising nearly $60,000 total. You can see the exact total on your paper. To make Christmas for Kids fun, we had a Christmas song themed week for our dress-up days. Monday, Silent Night, Wear Your Pyjamas. Tuesday was Candy Cane Man, Wear Red and White. Wednesday was Deck the Halls, Deck Out in Holiday Clothes. Thursday was Frosty the Snowman, Wear a Hat to Top Off Frosty. Friday was Santa Claus Is Coming to Town, We Need Elves, Reindeers, and Santas. To make Christmas for Kids more fun, we had prizes we could earn. The more money we earned as a school, the more prizes we got, we got. We earned all prizes. When we raised $1,000, you get a Christmas movie. When we raised $2,000, we get Two Telly Strings of Principals. When we raised $3,000, Mr. Rary Has to Kiss a Pig. Can't wait to see this, Pucker Up!
I'm ready.
Cooper?
Born ready, Cooper.
Could you repeat that louder? The one part about Mr. Rary?
Mr. Rary Has to Kiss a Pig. Can't Wait to See This, Pucker Up!
Born ready, Cooper. Bring it on.
When we raised $4,000, we get a mystery surprise. So what is a surprise in this man?
Can't say.
That's why it's a mystery. There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks so much for doing that.
We hope you can find out what the surprise is.
Friday.
Friday.
Friday, okay.
Cooper, before you step on, I do have one question for you. What is a Christmas tree's favorite candy? Ornaments.
What?
Ornaments. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. That's great. That's quite a...
So they get all of those that they need?
They reached all the goals.
So they get everything, and when do you get to kiss a pig?
So it's happening this Friday.
And we will...
What time is that?
We will be there.
It's at 1:30 in the afternoon, the program starts. So I don't know when the pig will come out, but that's when the program starts, so...
I think we could get some more donations here.
Yeah, we may need to have it in the gymnasium or maybe in a bigger venue.
Are you going to be there? I mean, this is...
It's monumental.
This is probably TV 13 news.
I would think so.
No disrespect from Bryant, but... I'm ready. I'm ready to meet my fate. That's good stuff. Proud of the kids. That's a good...
Lynn, do you have a telephoto lens you could bring to make sure that...
With me now.
Perfect. Yeah. You're not going to want to miss that one. Oh, that's so good, though. Man, 59, 985 they've raised.
That's awesome, yeah.
Just since 2012. Wow, that's really impressive. And every year, they've gone up.
I'm not crawling.
They had one year, it looks like they had a couple years they went down, '17 and '18. But that's pretty impressive.
Absolutely.
To make almost $8,000. And I did want to ask him how they did their fundraising, if they went door-to-door or how they actually were able to come up with that.
Yeah, they screwed it up pretty quick, so I don't know the exact way they found that, but they worked hard.
Well, that's great. We thank them for coming and sharing that with us. So, all right, we'll move on then to the treasurer's reports and recommendations.
Thank you. So the regular monthly reports are in your packet. If you have any questions about those, I can answer it out. Otherwise, I'll move on to my recommendations I have for you. amended permanent appropriations, a total increase this month of $62,248.47, the majority of which is a permanent improvement. A little over $55,000, which represents funds that we are going to use to put video cameras on the buses that do not have them. So, and I think that work is already underway. So we will have video cameras inside all of every single bus in the fleet so that we can see inside the buses. And that is the major change there in your amended appropriations. Then I have for you, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. As you're aware, every year, the Budget Commission looks at our tax rule and the tax levies that have been passed and determines what rates are necessary to collect the funds. And from time to time, they revise them. As the property valuations came in, they've reassessed the need this year and are recommending a lowering of the bond levy from 7.45 mils to 7.00 mils and a reduction in the substitute levy from 6.9 mils to... or sorry, 6.8 mils to 6.3 mils. So both of those levies will be reduced for the tax year, which will begin collection in February and then the second half this summer. So they set those rates, but then require you to authorize them. So it's a two-part step that we do every so often. And then next, I have a sign language interpreter services contract for one of our students who needs a sign language interpreter. She's here, and so we're contracting with the ESC for that. And then we want to recognize and thanks Bangler Candy Company for the donation of 2,500 candy cans.
Well, did we get any?
I do not have any with me, Mr. Bennett. I apologize.
So how often does that levy amount change then?
So typically, they try to set it once in January and then it's set for the year. With the reappraisal this year, that's why we're seeing a change. And there's a lot of estimation in there. If the first half comes in a lot weaker or a lot stronger, then sometimes they'll make a mid-year correction as well so that we're right on target with what we're supposed to collect.
Right, and so the number doesn't change? It's just a percentage because of the collection?
Yeah, that's correct, because we're on the 20 mil floor for our operating levies. And so we collect those 20 mils. But then for the bond levy, there's a certain amount that's supposed to come in to cover our bond payments. And the same thing with the substitute levy, it's supposed to raise 1.9 total. And so they make those adjustments to make sure that we're getting those amounts on the property taxes.
Yep. That's what I was thinking. So thank you.
Any other questions for Kevin?
No.
All right, then I would accept a motion to approve the treasurer's reports and recommendations.
So moved.
Thank you, Deb.
A second.
Thank you, Dustin.
Ben?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Okay, and then I have some reminders for you. We have... This meeting, of course, is the end of this session of the Board of Education, and we will begin the next year with our organizational meeting, which we have set for January 10th. We intend for it to take place here at the Bryant Elementary Commons in our regular room at 7:00 p.m. and then immediately follow it with the January regular board meeting. Our first order of business, I'll remind you, at that meeting will be to select a president pro temp to preside because, of course, Mr. Bennett's term as president ends on December 31st. And so we'll have to elect a president pro temp to run the meeting until you elect a president for next year. And then the annual items that we take care of at that organizational meeting is we elect the board officers, president and vice president. We will administer the oath of office to those officers as well as to those of you who are reelected for your new term. We will establish the service fund for the 2022 calendar year. We will appoint the board committees. We will establish a meeting schedule for 2022, and we will consider this board's membership in the Ohio School Board Association.
Very good. Any questions on that? Nope. Okay, so we can move on then with any old business, Mark?
No major updates?
Nothing?
No.
Okay, just still got some things hanging out there.
Continuing to monitor COVID at all times as our county is hitting a... continuing to hit a spike here in the state and beyond that, unfortunately. So I know our health department and the surrounding healthcare systems are being heavily impacted by that. We're monitoring our situations here within our district as well. So always constantly monitoring.
Good, good. Okay, so we'll move on then to new business. The board committee assignments for 2022.
Yeah, so as Kevin noted at our organizational meeting on January 10th, we're going to look to appoint board members to specific committees. Syndra Keeler is willing to continue her role as the Four County liaison
Good.
for her 2022 term. So with her willingness to do so, I thought we could make a motion and look to approve that today so we have her ready for January.
If I could just ask, were there any current board members that were interested or voiced any interest in serving in that role?
Not...
Well, I believe...
Was anybody asked?
So she approached me in stating that she was looking to finish her three-year term. In doing so...
I got you.
However, if there is someone interested on the board, I can go back to her and ask her if she's willing to let a current board member, if there's interest. So we can definitely do that.
Yeah, absolutely.
There's interests I would like to have that position if possible?
Awesome.
If she's good with that?
Yeah, so I will bring that back to her and let her know if there's interest from our current board.
I was unaware that it was a three-year term.
Yeah, so let me...
I didn't know that.
Well, yeah.
But I still would put my name in the hat for that position.
Perfect. So why don't we...
And then we'll have to figure out the details of it because she's got one year left. And then...
Right.
We'll have to do it again because it won't automatically renew. You'll have to voice it.
I got you what you're saying.
Desire to do it again, okay?
So I'll talk with her, and then we will make a motion today, and we'll discuss between now and January 10th.
Sure.
Yep.
And then make our motion for that.
Sure.
Appoint the person at that organization meeting.
Yeah.
That'll be perfect.
I plan on attending their meeting Thursday, 6:30 this week.
Okay.
Just to check it out. I haven't been there yet, so...
Sounds good. Okay, perfect. Thank you, Ben.
Okay, so then we'll move on. Any other new business then? If we don't need a motion right now, then for that, we can wait until January. We'll move to the superintendent's recommendations.
Yeah, so first up with the administrative recommendations, we have the approval of our curriculum guide for the 2022-2023 school year. So each January, our guidance counselors at the middle school and high school level begin to promote what courses we have available to our students. They sign up for those courses, and those courses begin to get scheduled for the next school year. They're always planning about six months ahead, so they have time to get students scheduled into all of their desired courses. So with that, they have their updated curriculum guide that contains all of the courses listed in it, and you can see that as an exhibit. What I'm going to do is I'm going to go through the changes from last year to this year that we have. So the notable changes to be aware of in that curriculum guide, because it is lengthy. The first one is at the sixth grade level, they're going to be looking to transition away from being on their own bell schedule. So sixth grade currently follows its own bell schedule, which allows them to have blocked classes for math and English. So they spend two consecutive periods in math and in English. So therefore, they're on a different schedule than the rest of the middle school. What they're looking to do is bring them all together, that being sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, onto the same schedule so that sixth graders will follow the same bell schedule as the rest of the middle school, which will allow them to have a few more course opportunities as they navigate through their day because they will not be blocked into two periods of math and two periods of English. However, there will still be the opportunity for students to have two periods of math and English by taking an enrichment course, either by their desire or by working with our staff to be placed into that if they need remedial skill help in those subject areas. So that's the biggest change that is coming to our sixth grade. So with that, there are courses that are typically on a trimester schedule, so meaning 12 weeks versus every nine weeks. So our quarters for grades seven through 12 is first quarter is nine weeks, second quarter is nine weeks, and then at the end of the second quarter is the end of a semester. So they're going to now take courses on a semestrally term versus a trimestrally term. Trimesters were 12 weeks, so they go every 12 and rotate. So those classes that are shifting from trimestrally to semestrally are our sixth grade STEM class, our sixth grade art class, a world music class, our health class, and our PE class. So those will be offered now. So they'll actually be in there a little bit longer because they'll be in for two consecutive quarters or an entire semester. So that'll be the rotation for our sixth graders. So that's a big change there. In grades seven and eight, they're going to add a few courses, one of those being our third one course, and that's a Discovering Spanish course. So it's an introductory class into a world language, and hopefully that allows them to see if they're fit or have the interest in it in moving forward as they hit middle school, grade levels, and beyond. So at the high school, the changes that they're looking to make, we have a new course that's actually going to be a pilot course with the Ohio Department of Education. It's going to be called Mathematical Modeling and Reasoning. And this is going to be a substitute class that students can take in lieu of Algebra II. So currently, students have to earn four math credits towards graduation. Algebra I, geometry, Algebra II, and a fourth math as they progress through. Algebra II, as you get into your upper grade levels, does present just a different curriculum that is very challenging for some, and others comes very naturally. So the end goal is for the Ohio Department of Education to allow students to have a plethora of options that can help them earn those four credits. So we're going to be piloting the addition of a course called Mathematical Modeling and Reasoning, which will allow them to fulfill one of those four math credits towards graduation. And they can take this class in place of Algebra II if desired. So they will work with their guidance counselors on that to find out the best placement for them to earn their four math credits. As college and career focus always is present, we're actually looking to add another career-based class. It's called Rise Up Credentially and Career Success. And this will allow students to earn a retail industry and fundamentals certificate. It would also have a focus on customer service and sales certification. So this is another class that would allow us to provide students more of those career-based skills. It would hit on things such as identification of the economic impacts of retail, defined and understanding customer service and sales skills. There's a huge aspect in learning curve associated with this course in the technology available in these career paths. Understanding the customer lifecycle, assessing and meeting customer needs, executing sales, and also a focus on building resumes and how to interview appropriately. So a career focus with this class, and that's known as the Rise Up Credentially and Career Success Course. And then one last addition. If you recall, we implemented personal finance as a graduation requirement just a few years ago. As students are now starting to progress through that, we're looking to add a Personal Finance II course. So there is another progression with that as students get older and they move through personal finance.
That's great.
So those are the changes coming...
So with any of these, any additional staffing considerations we need to make or...
So these are all done with the current staffing levels that we have and with the certifications that they have. So for example, Personal Finance II, the same instructor would pick that up with their certification. As we look towards the other classes at the middle school level, those would all be incorporated with our current certificated staff.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? Comments? Okay, I would accept a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendations on the administrative, or the six to 12 curriculum guide.
So moved.
Thank you, Deb.
Second.
Thank you, Mike.
Deb?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so that brings us to our personnel recommendations. So in Exhibit H, you can see the list of certified and classified substitutes that will be looked to be approved for employment at Bryant City Schools because we are always in need of substitutes. So that's letter A, letter B. We have a few staff members who have finished some coursework at the collegiate level and have shifted on our salary schedule from the master's to the master's plus 20 pay columns. That is Jamie Morris and Jessica Garricki. So congratulations to them on their efforts. In letter C, you'll see a one-year limited teaching contract. This is for a fifth-grade intervention specialist. This is for Jordan Brown, coming in at zero years of experience, effective December 9th. We, if you recall, we had a parenting leave in the fifth grade, and we had positions that we looked to reduce through attrition in the recent calendar year. And we are seeing a high need for intervention services specifically at fifth grade, specifically with pull-out services, being able to give those students the one-on-one, individualized remedial help that they need. But we also are learning of retirements in the world of intervention and moving forward. So we are able to, with this hire, look to fill some gaps now but also prepare for some vacancies into the future that we're forecasting for next year.
Yep, great.
So with letter D, we have a transfer of a classified staff member, and that's Emily Keller as a non-special ed... non-special education, middle school, high school, ESEA certified paraprofessional. That's seven and a half hours per day. This is the same job that she's been working. We're just noting that it is a transfer from a conglomeration of her duties in part-time roles into one main full-time position. And speaking of retirements, for letter E in the world of intervention, we have Teresa Moore will be retiring, effective at the end of this school year. So congratulations to her on making her decision, and we know she'll enjoy her last six months and prepare for whatever the future holds for her beyond Bryant City Schools. Congratulations to Terry. And letter F, just a non-renew of an individual from our substitute list, and that is Megan Carpenter.
Any questions on those items?
I'll make a motion to approve personnel recommendations.
Thank you, Dustin.
Second.
Thank you, Ben.
Dustin?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have the second reading of a potential board policy. It's policy 5223. It's called Release Time for Religious Instruction. We had a slew of policies that we performed the second reading on last month and worked with our company, Miola, to update our board policies. This one did not make it quite in time, but this is a policy that would allow us as Bryant City Schools to release a student to an event outside of Bryant City Schools that we do not oversee or have jurisdiction over. Sometimes we have students go into different church events, different programming. It just allows us to count that as an excused absence should they choose to attend a program of that nature. So that is policy 5223. So any questions on that policy and its second reading?
Any questions?
Nope.
All right, I would accept a motion to approve that second reading of the policy item for the Release Time for Religious Instruction.
So moved.
Thanks, Deb. Thanks, Mike.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Alright, points of information, Mark, you want me to do that, or you wanna do that?
I could, I could take it, and you can fill in anything or ask any questions you might have. So, our next board meeting, as Kevin noted, the organizational, organizational and regular board meeting, back-to-back, January tenth, seven o'clock in the Commons. And next, our next business advisory council meeting with, well, it was Ben and Mike, and we'll set those, those committees at our next organizational meeting, but we'll determine who will go to those. That is set for Wednesday, February sixteenth at seven fifteen in the morning. We always look forward to those conversations. So, those are the next two upcoming dates.
Alright, great. Anything else for the good of the cause?
So, I'm aware of a need to enter executive session to discuss specialized details of security arrangements, and I suggest the board may wish to take action afterwards.
Alright, so do I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Thank you Mike.
Second.
Thank you Ben.
Scott?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you everyone.
Okay, we're good. So, do you wanna continue on then, Mark, with the superintendent recommendations?
Yep, so I have some recommendations that are now continued, and these are administrative recommendations, and this would look to pass MOUs one, two, and three, which are all related to safety and security, which is all information that has to be kept confidential as we develop and work with our agencies here in the county for safety and security plans. I'll make a motion to approve MOU one, two, and three as discussed.
Thank you Dustin.
Second.
Thank you Mike.
Ben?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else? Anybody have anything else?